...by the high-speed scanner, we'll go over to the adjudicator machine. That was part of the absentee ballot counting suite, if you will, for Dominion. In addition, they had something that was called a local data center where all the election officials would work from a central computer workstation with a series of laptops, et cetera, that were connected to the rest of these computers. We'll get into that a little bit later here. But that Immaculate Central area is one of the key pieces of, or key systems, if you will, that are on the ground for the absentee ballots in particular. If you're at an in-person polling location, you'll have the Immaculate Precinct set up, and that's on the right-hand side of this diagram. Up on the top is kind of the local data center and the, kind of the eye in the sky, the overarching look at what's going on with the election. And we'll get into that a little bit more detail later. And as you guys know, Dominion Voting Systems was used here in Arizona, in Maricopa County, and they were using some of the same equipment we were just talking about in regards to the Immaculate Precinct and also Immaculate Central, that can, the scanner there. So, I said that I was in your position before, right? So if I were in your position, these are kind of some of the key questions I would be asking in regards to all that we're hearing about this testimony regarding this election. Number one, was the chain of custody for the election artifacts broken? And thank you very much, Senator-elect Townsend, for bringing that up. That is a key term for everybody to understand, "chain of custody." And we're going to go over a little diagram on specifically where some of my comments are going to focus in on in that chain of custody. All right? And the key is to hit the right arrow, all right? And was there evidence of election fraud? There can be fraud that happens that may not even violate statute, but you know that the intent is there to defraud the election, and they take advantage of loopholes that we have in the law. For example, in Detroit, we know that there was an ability for people to vote both at the poll and absentee. So some people's votes were more important than others. Was there evidence that election statutes were violated? Yeah. And Michigan, we have evidence to suggest that's exactly what happened. Was there evidence of foreign agents with the ability to manipulate the election data and third parties getting access to that data? We believe that, we've seen evidence of that as well. But the other thing need to ask is, well, all right, what are we going to do about it if we see all this happening? And what options do you have as legislators? All right, so let's go to this chain of custody. And I could go into a lot more detail on this chain of custody, and I'll, but I like to simplify it into just four key artifacts. Qualified voter file, i.e. who's registered to go off and vote in your state. Number two, poll book, that's a precinct-specific extract of the data from your qualified voter file. The ballot itself, pretty important artifact, right? But then, in the spirit of the old Stalin quote, "It's not he who votes that counts, it's the one who counts the vote that counts." You've got to look at the ballot tabulator and how the votes are tallied. And that was my focus when I went to the Detroit AV Counting Board. I was one of those folks that was not specifically assigned to any particular counting station. I was looking at the big picture. And we'll go over what I found here in a sec. First of all, everybody hopefully has seen the idea that there's been a lot of voter anomalies. This is our first clue that something's happened. When you're on the ground, you can see all the things that are happening, you know, onesie-twosie style, and say, "Hey, wait a minute, that envelope was backdated," or you can see that they adjudicated something in favor of the Democrats or the Republican, or something like that. That's easy to go off and see, but it's very difficult to see the big picture. That comes out afterwards with experts like Colonel Waldron. And in this case, we first started seeing issues when people were talking about Benford's Law being violated. That's actually using criminal court cases to determine whether or not fraud existed. So that was the first indicator that some of the analyses we've seen flagged that. That's not proof. I mean, it's getting the, it's telling you that it's, you've got something off here that you've got to investigate. Then, we've seen linear regression analyses, that there's a lot of noise in, but it seemed to indicate a pattern of vote distribution that indicated some data manipulation. Then, most recently, we have actually seen folks who believe that they've identified specifically what the algorithm that was used to switch some of the data. So, some other things that were kind of odd, and you don't see while you're necessarily on the ground, but in retrospect, you'll be able to get access to it. This is actually documented as part of the affidavit that was submitted in a lawsuit that's put in Michigan by Sidney Powell and in other states. And you guys have voted quite a bit. You guys are, most of you have already served in office, right? Do you remember any of your votes being tabulated with a decimal point on the back of them? I don't remember any. My eight years serving in the Michigan Senate, any times where I actually had a decimal point after a vote tally?
So that would suggest that a partial person was voting?
Well, sometimes, you know, there are people that tried to make you feel like a partial person when you serve, but no, that wasn't the case here. And so, you guys have probably all heard about what I call the "little switch," the Antrim County. We've heard testimony on that already today and some of the things that could possibly happen. Getting into the possible technical reason for that is maybe you have an internal ballot barcode switch on it, where they have one barcode style or ballot style that's flagged, and then when they associate a specific scan of a different barcode style, it may have the voters or the candidates flipped in it, the Dominion suite. And this is where you might see evidence of, this is the only place that I know of at least, that can start putting in fractions into your vote. Because if you meet a certain vote threshold, it'll go off and switch that, it'll prioritize the votes for the second choice, if you will, and give them 10% of the first choice of whoever, of the, 10% or whatever number you specify. It'll actually get into the point of allocating percentages of votes to one of the candidates. Another thing is data manipulation via remote access. And another thing to look at, as you guys investigate what happened here or didn't happen inside Arizona, is take a look at your public accuracy test. And there are people that, this is usually in Michigan at least, it's specified what the standards are for that by the Secretary of State. And if you don't run all the possible permutations of votes that might happen on a given ballot, you may leave gaps that can be exploited. And I would submit, and we're going to show one of the examples of where we believe one of those gaps, is that you could maybe flip a vote from a certain candidate to a write-in candidate and preload this with write-in candidates. And we think we have evidence of that happening in Detroit. So, if you want to go off and check into this, one of the things you're going to need to do, so, yep, is look into compact flashcards, event logs, and paper vote tallies. So, these tabulator data cards, that's where the compact, that's where a lot of the election data we've been wanting to look at is going to be located, so please make sure you get your hands on that. Then we talk about the big switch. I'm not going to get any detail on this. Suffice it to say, in Michigan, you know, our current vote deficit for President Trump is being projected as 154,000, 188 votes. We've got more than that that we can tie back to potential fraud. So, in the state of Michigan, I know a lot of people have written us off in this context, but I tell you, Michigan's in play because of what the level of fraud we've seen. So here's what our Detroit AV Counting Board looked like. And essentially, it was set up, so there's 503 precincts in the city of Detroit. They put in 134 of these Immaculate Central stations all the way around. That's where the poll books were located. And there are about two to five precincts per Immaculate Central unit. We had five poll workers per station. Overall, I would submit, there was probably less than 10 Republican workers that whole night sitting at those, and by law, we're supposed to have a Republican and Democrat adjudicating ballots. Here's what, I said that I was looking at the big picture when I got in there. I was looking at the big picture. First question I asked was, one of these chief election officials, his name was Chris Thomas, I said, who I worked with when I was serving in the Senate, I said, "What, how are you going to protect the chain of custody around the tallies of the individual tabulators and your report outs to the county and all points beyond that?" So we talked about the idea of this getting reported out to New York Times, you can see it on CNN and all that kind of stuff. "Show me how that chain of custody is protected." And this election official, who was state elections director in Michigan for two decades, said, "I don't know." Now, this is kind of an important data point, don't you think? So, and I was bad during the rest of the night, and I said, "You know what?" He finally acquiesced and said, "Tell you what, I'll let you know." And then, finally, the last statement he had on it, because I was pretty persistent, was saying, "You know what, I'm not going to tell you until after tomorrow." And I go, "Well, you know what the primary duty of a poll challenger is? To make sure that the election process are executed effectively, efficiently, and accurately in transparent manner." He did not allow that to be done. Now, I can see physical transfer of data. I can watch when somebody moves a flash drive from a tabulator to a central station, and I can go off and verify vote counts at that handoff. I can't get inside wires to go off and trace electrons through the Ethernet cables that I saw positioned. And that's the next point I want to highlight. And this is something important for you to understand here, is how these were connected. A lot of these election officials will swear up and down that none of these machines were connected to the Internet. And that's based on propaganda being pushed by companies like Dominion Voting Systems. They will say that they have an air gap. They will say that they have firewalls in place, they have encryption in place. And I hope to demonstrate here that that doesn't mean a heck of a lie. And any hacker worth their salt knows that if one computer's connected to the Internet, they're all connected to the Internet, firewall or not. And so here's a diagram that I put together based on, and I, this is literally midnight the next night, before I forgot everything, I wanted to make sure I documented everything that was there. I went through and physically traced all the cables from all the tabulators and adjudicators to the local data center at the top. So it's that local data center that, we have election officials that did confirm that that was connected to the Internet, but they said none of the tabulators or anything else were connected to the Internet. I can show physical connection between those tabulator, tabulator machines, the Ethernet cables, two routers, or managed switches, tough to tell from 12 feet away. But they're, it's a router-type of device, connected to all the other devices on this network. And as Colonel Waldron pointed out, it's designed to work as a network. And so all these tabulators were connected to one another, all the adjudicators were connected to one another, the local data center that they acknowledged was connected to the Internet were connected to these tabulators and adjudicators. And so if that wasn't enough, we went around to all the different computers and observed in the bottom right-hand corner of all the computers, I can't do this because it defaults into a certain slide presentation mode, but if you have laptops that are Windows-enabled and you're connected to the Internet, you roll over that, and you've got a Windows 10 device, roll your mouse cursor over to that bottom right-hand corner, and you'll see a LAN Internet connection icon. And you roll over it, it's going to pop up and say, "Connected to the Internet." They wouldn't do that test for me to go off and demonstrate that. Yeah. So, guys, it's serious stuff, and I also wanted to highlight, I took a snapshot of what the Wi-Fi connections were at that point in time. And one of them's called AV underscore connect. I wonder what that was connecting? Part of their spec that they have in the contract with the state of Michigan that is supposed to be connected via Ethernet cables. And they even have cellular-based modems that they can plug into a lot of these items to transfer the data over the Internet. They've got a Dominion Tech Support Manual that says, "Connected to the Ethernet." There's no denying that this was network-connected. By the way, even if they say it wasn't connected to the Internet, in the Detroit AV Counting Board, I can trace a physical connection that says that the system that was used to tabulate 172,000-plus votes in the state of Michigan was all networked together. So even if it wasn't some guy sitting in an ace shanty in Antarctica connected to the Internet, that one guy in the city of Detroit that had access to all that information could modify the votes locally there. And so, why does it matter? Well, we already talked about these man-in-the-middle attacks. We talked about, they're in the Sidney Powell lawsuit that's out there. There's additional exhibits that highlight that these passwords are available on the Internet. And when you have a man-in-the-middle attack, you think you're getting the right data, you think you're talking to the right person, but you ain't. You're talking to an in-between guy. We also got NIST left a key under the map. What do I mean by that? All the specs on what files to look for, what their file size is, everything else for the voting system is left up on the Internet for everybody to go off and see. I went there myself, I could download this file, took that extract from it. You can find out everything you need to go off and manipulate as a hacker. And we've got challenger observations on the ground that attest to each and every one of these, and I just want to highlight one of them, the poll worker observation, that we actually, he actually observed the fact that the printout of the tape said that there were write-in candidates on it, yet when you actually, he will attest in his affidavit that there were no write-in ballots submitted.
Senator Kolbeck?
Yep.
We're out of time.
Yep.
So, thank you very much for your testimony. We also appreciate the slide deck that you presented, and if you are willing, would you please distribute it, that to the members of this panel? And I'm sure Mayor Giuliani would like to have it as well.
I will leave a copy for everybody.
Any questions for this gentleman, Mayor? Or would you like to move on to Anna Orth? All right. Thank you very much, Senator. Anna Orth, would you please come up to the witness stand? I guess it's a table, not a stand, I was just corrected. Thank you for coming, Anna.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please give your name? And Mayor, the floor is yours.
My name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer.
Can you get a little bit closer to the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Anna, and I'm a resident and registered voter in Pima County. I volunteered as a poll observer on October 16th, and then I signed up to work as a poll worker on November 3rd in a neighboring precinct. Would you like me to just give you an overview?
Yes, please do.
Okay. Well, I wrote in because I was aware of some irregularities that happened while I was a poll observer, and some different activity that I just felt uncomfortable with on election day. So I'll go ahead and start with what happened on the day that I was an observer. I was certified prior to that to be able to watch the two people that would be correcting the problematic ballots, which I guess are called, they were duplicates. When I walked into the room, they said, "I'm sorry, you're not, you can't be in here. You're going to go into the, another room." So I had to walk back to the front desk. I was escorted from that area back to the, to the one area where the ballots were being separated from their envelope. And I, I was, there were 30 to 32 people doing this, and there were probably 14 to 17 tables that were, they are sat, two people. And it was supposed to be a Democrat and a Republican. But not every table had a Democrat, but not every table had a Republican. So many of those tables had either a Libertarian or someone, there was one table with someone from the Green Party, and then there were three or four tables that had a Pima County worker at the, at each of those tables. And they worked there at the elections office because when people came in from the building, they talked to them, and their conversations led me to believe things like, "Oh, did you leave your lunch? Did you bring lunch?" And they said, "No, it's over at, in my office. I'm going to go get it later." And she was back in five minutes. So, similar situation conversations that went on with people who came in with those, with those workers. I found it difficult for me to be able to oversee 32 people and what they were doing. I was able to catch a few of the things that were mistakes or where ballots were just, they were taking them out of the envelopes and putting them on, in a pile. And their job in this particular bill, room was to watch, to make sure that the ballots were in one direction, and then they would double-check the count of the ballot to the envelope, to, to, I imagine, to check it against the envelopes that came in. Each table was given a bin to put these in, and these bins would then go to another area where they were being stacked up to be tabulated starting on October 22nd. Many of these had mistakes, or they were written in pencil, and the workers, as I went around, had questions on, you know, "Is this a good ballot? Is this not?" I was told by the gentleman that ushered me out of the place where I was supposed to be and said, "You aren't to talk to anyone. You do not communicate with them. If you have an issue or you see an issue, you need to go to the supervisor, which is at the front of the table, up front of the room." So, as I saw things, as I went around to each table, I would go to the supervisor and I let her know, you know, "They don't know what to do with this, this ballot. It's in pencil or blah, blah, blah." And she'd say, "No, it's fine. It's fine." So, as I went back to the tables where I saw these issues, under my breath, I said, "You need to go tell her. You need to go talk to them about this." And so, many of them said, "What do I do with this ballot? It's in pencil. Oh, it's fine. It'll go through." Or it was, some people wrote over their ballot, over the little oval circle where they were supposed to mark, and those were put into a pile, a separate pile that would be called duplicates. Those duplicates then went to another table and were then taken to the room where I had been ushered out of. And there was one person, there was supposed to be a second person, and I said, "Is there a Republican at that table?" Because I said, "Is there a Democrat and a Republican?" And he said, "Well, we hope so. They have to, if they get here, but it'll just be, you know, just be me and hopefully a second person." So, as I saw these ballots along this area that was, that they marked as dupe, which I understood to stand for duplicates that were going to be fixed. They would then be taken to the table, to the room where I could see a glass, it was a glassed wall between us, and they were taken around to the other side to be dealt with. I didn't get to see that at that point. So when I left and the other person took over for me at 1:00, I was there for five hours, I shared with her, I said, "There's a lot of mistakes that are happening. They're just, they're not putting them in the order that they need to be in, so when they get folded, they become a duplicate because they can't be counted. The machine wasn't going to accept them, so it had to be then taken out of the pile and put into a duplicate." So when I left, the man who had ushered me out of the room, the first room, came to get me at 1:00 and walked me straight over to the front desk. And he said, "I hope everything went well." And I said, "Well, my concern is not necessarily where I was. It was hard for me to watch 32 people by myself. But more concerning is when these ballots were opened in the other room." And so to give you kind of a sense of how it worked is, the ballots, however they were collected, were brought into an initial area of the offices of the elections in Pima County. And that room, they were then, the envelopes were then opened up, and the signatures were checked. So then, they would go through a double door, where they were then sent to the room that I was in, where there were as many people as I explained before, trying to put them in an order, not necessarily of where they were from, but how they came in. So, just, let's just say there were maybe 200, 250 per box, I'm not sure, but they, they came from different zip codes, different areas. It was whatever was mailed in. And then those were then put aside to be counted after the 22nd. It was, my concern was the amount of ballots that were considered to be problematic, that were then leaving the area that I was in, going to a room where there were only supposed to be two people, and yet not even sure there was two people. So, that was my experience as an observer that I shared. I thought that was concerning. The other thing is, when I came back to drop off my ballot, I had to drop it off outside, and there was no longer a police officer. And we found out that it was because of our mayor, or not my, I live in Oro Valley, but the Tucson mayor had asked, had, wasn't allowing a police officer in front of the office anymore because it was upsetting to people to come and vote. And so, I asked the man, so my, I have to put my ballot out here, and he said, "Yes." So I said, "How can I be sure someone isn't going to come and take this big box?" And he said, "No, we're, you know, we're watching it." And I said, "Who's you?" And it was him and an elderly woman who was about 85. I, I don't know, and I'm sorry, meaning that she was, she looked fragile, and I don't know how that could be protected, but I was a little concerned about that. It did make it in because when I checked my ballot, it was counted. But another question is, how, how do we know who we voted for? That's a separate issue, but my point is, is that I don't know if my ballot actually has the, the people that I voted for. And, you know, as I said, that's something separate from what I experienced there as an observer. As a poll worker, I was assigned to be a provisional ballot clerk, and that was on election day. And on that day, I had worked the primary in August, so I had an idea of who would come by, what the issues were. But this time, we had so many more people who needed a provisional ballot than we had been allotted to have in this one precinct. So that was concerning. But the people that came to me were, I had so many people who said, "I didn't ask for a mail-in ballot. My wife isn't listed as an early ballot person, but I am." And that, those are the kind of people that we had a lot of. But secondly, I had people who had just moved here from other states, and most of them were from two apartment complexes. It was, it was concerning because as we counted them, we probably had who were in one apartment complex with one address, who had moved here from other states, that I began to turn away. A little, I'd say, I don't know, within the hour, we were so busy that I took a break and went outside, and a gentleman with a yellow shirt said, "Hi, I'm with, I'm with the Democratic Party. I'm here from California, and I'm here at this precinct specifically. I came from a Phoenix, in Maricopa County, a precinct there, and we're here to help turn Arizona blue." And I don't know if, just looking at me, he decided that he felt safe saying that to me? Maybe he assumed that I would be okay with that? I was shocked, and he, and I said, "Oh." So, what, he said, "Oh." I said, "So what is, what is your plan? What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, I have lawyers on call to contact immediately if you, if they don't allow them to vote, people to vote." And I said, "Well, there was a cutoff date." And he said, "Nope, every count, every vote should count." So, that made me nervous, of course, because I didn't know the law specifically, and I didn't want to do something that would cause a problem, so I thought, and he said, "Oh, I've only had to turn away, no, just a couple people were turned away, and I was able to help one person go back in." Well, that, that was probably sent to me because I was the provisional ballot clerk, so of course, that was somebody that I had to take care of. So I went back in and thought, "Well, this is unusual. I, I'm concerned that somebody outside is going to be calling an attorney on something that I did." Because I said, "No, I sent somebody away and said, 'I'm sorry. I mean, if you don't have any proof that you've lived here, or proof of having registered, I, I can't, I can't give you a ballot.'" So I called the recorder's office and explained this, and she said, "Well, you have to let them, all votes will count, but it's on a case-by-case basis." So, at that point then, I had to call in to the recorder's office every, at every single ballot. And you have to understand, we ran out of spaces. So, I mean, I, and we were at like 200, I'm sure you can check on this to be sure, but we were over the amount of ballots we had. But every time I called the recorder's office, they would ask me for their name and their, their birth, date of birth. And when they would look that up, she, the person on the phone would say, "Okay, well you can go ahead and let them vote." And so, I was trying to find a constant that I could go by so that we could speed up the process. I mean, is it, is it if they've moved here and they have this, and if they've moved here at a certain date? What is it? And they would not give me any constant. They just said, "You just have to call for, every case is different." So, my concern and why I wrote in was that I had two people, right after having a slew of people who came in from other states wanting to vote without having been registered and allowed to vote per the recorder's office, I then had someone come in from Maricopa County and one from Pinal County. It just happened right after. It just happened right after. And each of them, when I called in, they said, "Nope, you're going to have to have them go back to Maricopa County, and the other one will have to go back to Pinal." And I said, "Well, how is that that this person from Wisconsin, and this person from Michigan, and this person from Kentucky was able to do that?" And she put me on hold for a second and then came back and said, "Well, it's just that we have their records more accurately than we have for Maricopa. We just can't, we don't have, we're not able to process a Maricopa County ballot." So, I had to send them away, but then, as they, other people were coming through, it made me question why that was happening. So, I, I asked them, "Do you have information that will prove that you are a resident, that I can, I can verify that you are registered to vote here?" And they would pull out their card, and it very clearly said that they were Republican. They had a voter card. So, to, to test this theory out, I called the recorder's office and asked them, and they were denied. I had to deny them. And so, I was in a frenzy trying to take care of all of these people, but I found that the discrepancy between every vote counts and only those that the recorder's office would allow was indicative of how they chose who they wanted to allow to vote. And there was a consistency in the voter preference that they chose, and that concerned me. Because by the end of the night, which was at 8:15, after we counted all of the, they got put in the box and we were waiting for someone to come get them, I'm in the car. There was a large majority, a large percentage of people who were, had addresses from two apartment complexes. And the last thing is that I had a homeless man who came in with a, with a registration. And the reason I know he's homeless is because I said, "Where do you live?" And he said, he didn't speak English, and he said, "I don't have a home, but when I was at a, at a shelter, they registered me at the recorder's office." So, when I called about it and they said, "Well, he was probably registered to be in this precinct." And I said, "But he doesn't live here." And they go, "Well, it's, anybody who was registered downtown can vote." And so, I found that to be odd. And last week, for work, I was on the other side of town, and I saw this gentleman on this side of Tucson with his shopping cart. And I, I swung into the parking space and called him and just said, "Hi, can I talk to you?" And when he saw me, he ran off, you know, for, who knows why. But my, my point is, is these are the kind of people that, that had apparently permission to vote in a precinct that was literally 25 miles away because they had a voting card that was given to them from downtown, that, it was a downtown precinct that allowed him to vote here. So, my, my point is, is that if somebody from Pinal County and Maricopa County can't vote, how is it that, in my, in this precinct, how is it that a homeless man from another area of the town and also people from other states were able to get permission to vote? And that was concerning to me, and that's why I'm here.
Ms. Ors, thank you very much. Mr. Giuliani, do you have any questions specific to this witness?
Sure.
Please proceed.
Couple of.
Just, just to give you a marker on time, it's 12:02.
So, you were there for 16 and a half hours, Ms. Ors?
On Election Day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Wow. And you were supposed to work with the ballots that were being, that were being examined?
I was working with the voters, the ballots of voters who were not able to walk into the precinct to vote normally on a ballot. So, some of them came to me saying, "It says that I got an early ballot, and I never got it." Others said, "It says, it doesn't even say that I'm on there. It says that I've already voted, or I'm, I'm not allowed to vote here." Those were the kind of...
So, these were ballots that had difficulties?
Yes.
And there were 28 or 30, 35 people that were looking at those ballots that you had to observe?
No, that was, okay, on, on, I just described to you my experience as a poll worker on Election Day. Those 30 people that we, I mentioned earlier were, were when I was a poll observer on the 16th of October at the elections office in Pima County.
Right. And you were unable to see what they were doing?
I, it was a room as big as almost maybe half the size of this banquet room, and I was an observer watching 30...
As far away as we are?
I could walk behind them. I could walk behind them, but I couldn't walk behind 35 people at the same time.
And what were they doing?
They were taking them out of the envelope. They had already been, they had been brought in from the recorder's office where that, where the, the ballot had been opened, the envelope had been opened, and according to what I was told, the signature had already been checked in another room.
But you didn't see the signature checked?
No, I didn't get to see that. They would take these out and they would take...
Did you ask to see it?
Yes, and I was not allowed...
And were you refused?
Yes. So, they said, and I wasn't allowed to talk to anybody, but I, as I said before, I could talk to the supervisor. These people who sat at each of these tables, who were representative of mostly one party, with Democrat Party, and they would take them out of the envelope and then put them in a pile, and then separate the, the inside envelope. In Arizona, we have an outside envelope and the inside envelope, and then the ballot, right?
Right.
So, the ballot was then collected from the bin. So, each table would get a bin, and they would separate them, put the ballots in a, in a pile, put the envelopes in a, in a rubber band, put them to the side, and then mark that they had such-and-such amount of, of regular ballots and such-and-such amount of duplicates, problematic ballots, that then had to be taken to a table, and they would separate those, take the duplicates, mark them, put them at a table, which, which were then taken to the original room where I had been ushered out of, not, that I was not to help them.
In a room that you were excluded from, they examined the signatures?
Yes. No, they started examining the signatures, then removed to this room, and then from this room, they were then piled to then tabulate it later.
Did they do a further examination of the signatures?
No, not in this room. The only room that was done is...
So, you observed, you observed no examination of signatures, and they refused to let you do that?
Right. I was only allowed to watch these people put these in piles. So, when I was ushered back...
So, how many, how many ballots do you think? Just a rough estimate? How many ballots? A thousand, a hundred, 2,000?
I, I would say each box had between 200 and 250 ballots. And I was there for five hours. And during that time that I was there, each table went through six to seven to eight, depending on how fast they were, and how many mistakes they made. Because many times, the, the ballots weren't, weren't straight, and they had to recount them, or I would hear them say...
So, how do we, how do we do that arithmetic?
All right. Well, let's see, 250 times eight? Somebody who's not nervous maybe can say...
2,000.
That's per table. And there were about 16 to 17 tables of two people doing this at the same time.
So, so, as I best understand this, there were 2,000 ballots times 17 tables?
Yes.
That you or anyone else that you knew have got to check, got a chance? No Republican got a chance to observe that, as far as you know?
Well, I was the only observer allowed in at one time. So, a gal took over for me at 1:00 when I left, and I told her, "I, I'm exhausted. I don't know how you can watch all 17, but stand behind one of the tables, and, and you'll see that this particular table keeps folding them and tearing them, and once that happens, it has to become a duplicate. And when this becomes a duplicate, it goes to that table, and it goes to the room where we don't get to see what happens to that. So, you can't talk to them, but you can do this and tell them, 'Look, that's, that's, that's folded, or that's crooked, or..." And I said, "If you see one again that has a pencil on it, the supervisor is saying that yes." She told me specifically that it could go through, I mean, told me that it, it couldn't, but told them that it could. So, I said, "There's some discrepancy in what she's telling me and what she's telling them. So, you know, just do your best to try to, to keep an eye on, this particular table is doing this, that particular table when I walk by is doing that, that one over there has a Pima County worker on it, and she works here with them, and there's no Republican at that table. So, it's, it's, it's very concerning."
It sure is.
And so, that was the, so when I was ushered out, they came specifically twice to me and said, "Please don't talk to anybody, and you cannot leave on your own. Make sure that when it's time..." What time do you have to leave so we can walk you out? When they walked me out, the gentleman said, "I hope everything went well." And I said, "Well, I'm concerned because here, they were, you know, that my only concern is the handling of the ballots, which makes them ineligible to go through the machine correctly. But it's the room before me and the room after me that's, it's a concern. I, I don't get to see..."
Let me just, let me ask you about that. So, a certain number of ballots were now put aside as duplicates?
Yes.
Duplicates means that they had a problem?
Yes, that they have to be duplicated.
Right. It didn't mean there were two ballots.
Right. That's what they called them.
Duplicates can sound like two ballots.
Right.
What it meant was, there's something wrong with it, and therefore, we may have to duplicate it.
Yes, and that's the room that I was originally...
And they, and they were put aside?
Put aside, taken out.
And they were brought into another room, and you were not allowed to go in there?
No, I was not allowed to go back there.
So, you, you were cut off from that also?
Yes. I was specifically taken out...
You were cut off from observing the problem ballots?
Yes. I was specifically taken out of that room, ushered out and brought into this room, which really was just the room as I explained.
And how many, how many could you estimate that is?
Each table would have an average of, let's see, I would say maybe 1/16 of the pile, so, you know, let's say an average of maybe 10 to 20 ballots. But by the time I left, there were, these bins were filled. They would fill them, they would go correct them, or whatever it is that they did, and brought them back.
Best estimate?
I would say, my guess would be close to, in the time, the day that I was there, just in five hours, maybe 2,000 ballots?
Okay.
Yeah.
And you had a sense that when there was problems with ballots, or whether someone should vote or not, the choices that were being made were to allow people that appeared to be voting for Biden and the Democrats to vote, and declining those who appeared to be people who might be voting for Trump or the Republicans?
Well, yes. I began to get that sense after I saw that people from other states who weren't even registered in the state of Arizona were being allowed to, to vote. I was given direction that I had to give them a provisional ballot, because as they walked out, there was a gentleman out there who told me, he was specifically there to make sure that every vote, voter who wanted to vote could vote. And so, that was on Election Day though, Mr. Giuliani. That's not on the observ, the data.
Right. I got it.
And on that day, that's, that happened. And then, when I would get a voter who was from another county and had some indication, sometimes they had a shirt that either said Trump on it, or they, they showed me their voter card and it, and said, I, you know, and they gave me some indication that they were a Trump voter, and I had to call on them, like I did for every single person that came in, to the recorder's office, and I was told to send them away. And so, it was at that point that I started to see that there, this isn't, this isn't, this can't be right. This can't be right. So, I tested this and, and asked her...
Oh, it can't be right.
And then especially, as I said...
Glad you recognized that.
Yeah, and so, when I said, "They all, you all live at this apartment complex, and you all live at this other one?" And, and they said, "Well, yeah, we have to, you know, we're all coming in to vote." And so, I, I said, "Well, are you a reg, how long have you lived here? Is this your other precinct here? Well, I've lived here, I've lived there." And they still were allowed to vote. Many of them were not residents for more than a month. Other people said they were registered in another state, but that they were here. And, and then, as I said, I think the nail in the coffin for me was when this poor little homeless man, and I speak Spanish, so I spoke to him and said, "You know, how are you here? How..." And he said, "I was told to come vote. I want to vote." And I said, "Okay. Well, you know, do, where do you live?" And he goes, "Well, I lived in a shelter downtown." Well, downtown is 15 miles from where I live, so there, I'm sure that's not his precinct. He should be voting there.
So, you thought there were about 2,000 like this, roughly?
I would say easily, just in the five hours that I was there, on one specific day, and that was on a Friday, they were going to be counted, they were being collected to be tabulated.
One last question. The gentleman who said he was there to turn Arizona blue?
Yes, that was a guy...
What was he? What was his official position?
He had, he had a sign...
Was he an inspector of some kind?
No, he was an observer, a poll observer that was from California. He was from LA, and in, and on a break, I walked out there and, and I, I said hello and just walking, and he said, "Hi." And I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, I'm a poll observer for the Democratic Party, and I'm here..." I said, "Oh." And he, and he goes, "The weather's hot here. It's not as hot as it is at home." And I said, "Well, where are you from?" And he said, "I'm from California." And I said, "What are you doing here?" And he said, "Well, I'm here specifically to help turn this precinct blue, with this is one of our problem ones." And I said, "Oh." And as I said to the panel over here, I don't know why he felt comfortable telling me that, but he said, I, and I said, "You came all the way from LA?" He goes, "No, actually, I came from a other precinct in Maricopa where it was another one that we were, were focusing on, and now I'm here."
What, what was he doing? Was he campaigning? Was he encouraging people to vote for, for Biden?
There was a group of them.
What activities did he take part in to turn Arizona blue?
Well, as I understood, because I was inside working, his job was to make sure that anybody who was turned away to vote, that he would have people he could call, attorneys in, in his words. He goes, "I, I have a couple attorneys that I'm connected to right now, that if anybody's not allowed to vote, I can make sure that they're represented." And so, anybody who was not allowed to vote in that polling place, I was the one that they would be talking to. So, of course, that was, that was somewhat directed at me, since I'm the one who would say, "No, you can't vote." So, I don't know what else he was doing, but he said there was a group of them that were coming in.
And they, they sent him there sometime after you began doing that?
He was there, well, we started at 5:00 in the morning, just getting ready. So, when I went out for my, for a break, it was maybe around 10:00, and he had been there. And they were, they, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember what he had on his shirt, but they were, they were very clear that they were, they had T-shirts, they said, that they matched. Another person came in to take over for him, and it was a yellow shirt with something written on the front.
Well, thank you very much for your service and for your courage in testifying. I just make one point, Mr. Chairman. Her testimony alone, and I see no reason why she isn't telling the truth. By the way, she is under oath in the sense that she submitted an affidavit under penalty of perjury to what she just testified to.
Thank you, sir.
34,000 votes unobserved would change the nature of election, just our testimony.
I need a word.
One witness.
Ms. Ors, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Members Z, I, I know, I know everybody wants to ask a question.
I have one.
We need it, well, everybody has one. It is now 12:15. I expect this hearing, at the rate that we're going, we will be here until late into the night. Please be brief with your question, and I would appreciate it if there's no follow-ups, just so that we can have a lunch break and kind of set the expectation for the folks who are here. who are here, and get back at it.
And we'll try to make the witnesses focus a little bit more.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Leo Biussucci, I'm sorry, Representative Biussucci, you're first, and then Mr. Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Anna, for being here. Just a quick question about the voters that you said were coming in that were from out of town, or they just moved there, whatever their reasoning was. Did they have an Arizona ID with an address or anything to show you? Were they on the voter rolls, or these...
They were not on the voter rolls. They had out-of-state driver's licenses, but have a, either an electric bill, or not, or some kind of a bill that they showed me on their phone, showed me that they lived in this particular precinct. With that, I would call the recorder's office.
And you had verified through them that they were indeed legal to vote?
Right. And so then when I said, "Well, when did you move here?" "Well, I moved here on such and such a date." But you had to have registered, I think in Arizona, by the 15th, and then it was extended to the 22nd or the 23rd. So it was, it was just questionable that they were still allowed to vote, but I had a longtime voter who wasn't allowed to vote from another precinct. And yet someone could vote from another state.
Perfect, thank you.
Senator Burrell?
Yes, sir, thank you, ma'am. When the votes that needed to be duplicated, the ones that needed to be corrected, when they went to the end of the room, did you notice anybody in there that was actually overseeing that correction, a Republican or a Democrat?
No, as I mentioned before, that's the first room I went into, and he explained to me that he, this is the room where that would happen, but that I was not allowed to be in there.
When you were in there before they sent you somewhere else?
Yes.
Did you see a Republican and a Democrat observe?
No, he was alone, he was, no.
Only one?
He was just one person.
Do you know how he was registered? Do you know if he's a registered Republican or Democrat?
I, I don't know, but I have an idea, but that would be...
Bottom line is...
We'd appreciate, no speculation, thank you very much.
What's a violation of the law anyway? Because you're supposed to have both ballots, thank you.
All right. Members, one question, and then we're going to break for lunch. Representative Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Anna, I just have a really quick question. We had our county recorder in Maricopa County instruct voters to cross out mistakes on their ballots for the November election, and we later had a judge say, "No, that was likely breaking the law, you can't do that." We've also heard from adjudicators saying that they had seen a full Republican ballot all the way down, but that President Trump's name was crossed out, and the other candidate was circled in. Is it possible, in your opinion, in that other room that you weren't allowed to be in, when there wasn't a second person watching the adjudication, were there pins allowed? Were there, were they, would someone be able to cross out one candidate and vote for someone else?
Well, again, I wasn't in there to be able to say this accurately, but there's only, you know, can make an assumption, if a room requires two people and an observer, that a person by themselves, it's possible, of course it's possible, that that's what happened. But those are the kind of ballots that I'd see, that, because I was able to see them as they came through in this room, there was a, they were either all for GOP, or all for the Democratic Party, but one of the president, little oval, had been marked off, or not marked, crossed, which makes it a problematic ballot. So that would have to go into the other room that you're asking me about. And again, I wasn't in there to be able to speak accurately about what this person could or could have done, or didn't do. And that, to me, was the problem in this whole issue. I, I'm useless to be able to watch people just putting them in order. I, we should have had an observer watching these Democratic ballots.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Art, thank you very much for your testimony. Ladies and gentlemen, here's how we're going to manage the lunch break. As you leave, please wait a minute before you walk out the door, or you won't get back in. As you're walking out the door, you'll be given an armband, and in order to come back in, you'll have to show that armband. We are going to break, it's now 12:22. We will be back here at 1:00. It's going to be a short break, thank you.
Again, this is Liz Willis with Blake with Brightside Broadcasting Network. We are live on the ground here in Phoenix, Arizona, where Team Trump is doing their legal hearing regarding election irregularities in the state of Arizona. We've heard from three witnesses already, and it looks like we're going to be going late into the night, so we will be taking a lunch break and reconvening at 1:00, so don't go anywhere. We'll bring you the live coverage right back. But before we go anywhere, we have a couple things we'd just like to point out from what we've heard already today. And to thank our partners over at MyPillow, we know that getting a restful night's sleep is crucial to waking up on the right side of the bed. And with Christmas right around the corner, now is the perfect time to stock up on all these products from a company with a patriot-owned company. Visit mypillow.com to stock up on all the gifts for yourself and your loved ones. MyPillow guarantees ultimate relaxation with a wide variety of items to choose from, ranging from ultra plush towels, dog beds, mattress toppers, and Giza Dream Sheets, and so much more, including one of their biggest savings so far, which is their regular MyPillows valued at $69.98. If you use code RSBN, you can get those right now for just $29.98, a huge savings. Again, mypillow.com has hundreds of products to choose from, and if you use code RSBN at checkout, you can get up to 66% off your entire order. This is the perfect time to support a conservative company right before the holidays. Go ahead and get your shopping done now. You do not want to wait till it's too late. Blake, with that being said, I mean, what, what do you think so far? A lot has happened today, we've heard a lot of information.
There's, there's been an awful lot of information presented, and I think that Mayor Giuliani's remarks at the beginning about how there's a narrative out there that the election was the most secure ever, and I think he believed he said, "Please don't interrupt that narrative with the truth." And that's really, that's really what I think. I mean, I believe that we're in a situation where there's limited media coverage of this event, and it's not because that the information being provided isn't newsworthy, it's not because there aren't facts here that are being discovered, or being given to the lawmakers of Arizona for consideration, it's because...
It doesn't fit their narrative.
Exactly. Other networks are perhaps just not feeling that there's a story here. And in fact, this would be the largest political story of this century, and even last century. I mean, it's a scandal of amends proportions, if in fact voter fraud can be proven. They're not even looking for it, and I think that's, that's disturbing.
Not in the slightest. And we've been to Phoenix a lot, we know Fox 5 Phoenix is at all the rallies, and I thought that we'd at least see them here today, but like you said, they don't even care. I mean, not even enough to give it an ounce of oxygen to breathe on their nightly news routine. So it's shocking, it's upsetting, but we honestly don't need them. We have around 200,000 watching alone on YouTube, so thank you to everyone for tuning in. This should not be a polarizing topic. I think people on both sides of the spectrum right now should be worried about election integrity. Hearing these witnesses factually, it just doesn't make sense. Dominion Software is in Smartmatic Software Systems, which is owned by Hugo Chavez, and has been raised in so many corrupt Central and South American countries like Venezuela. I mean, that alone should tell you, that's not something that we want to be utilizing here in the United States, when it is our election integrity, the presidential election of the United States, something's got to give.
Yes, and both the Army Colonel and the former senator from Michigan presented pretty clear evidence that these servers were connected to the internet, that they weren't air-gapped, that they were not just, you know, not immune from tampering by some form of malicious actor who wanted to gain access to those totals. So saying that it's the most secure election ever, I think that's been completely blown out of the water today. I think there's just no way that anybody can, can look at the data and look at the information and, and hold that to be true. I think that, that story should be dead in the water at this point.
Yeah, with having the Ethernet cord connected to the server, this does allow for internet access, and in turn, it allows for communication between these servers to the black, what do they call that? Black box?
Black box?
No, no, no.
Dark web?
Deep web, deep web. I mean, anyone, anyone, like he said, any hackers can get on and change this. So a quote I want to take away from that is that your Venmo account is more secure than your 2020 vote. And that is what a information warfare specialist said today.
Yeah, absolutely, and I believe that, you know, the compact flashcards that they're using to transfer votes, and just, really, it's really, I don't, just the fact that some of the Dominion servers run on Windows 10 alone is enough for me to just be, really give pause to. I mean, the fact that these things are so easily manipulated by operators, and that even one, one operator with the correct permissions at a remote workstation, through the network, as these machines are designed to work, has the ability to change totals, is completely off-putting. You know, Jenna Ellis had a great quote, too, and that's, and it was that, "We're not asking you to overturn an election, we're asking you to ensure that corruption does not stand." And I think that's the core of what all of these hearings are about, to educate the American public that this is, the election took place, the results are there, but the results that we're looking at are fraudulent, are, are, at the very least, beset by the allegations and the possibility of fraud, and the fingerprints of fraud, it's, it's completely there. And what she's tasking the lawmakers to do is basically admit that you're not overturning an election, you're taking back your constitutional authority as a member of your state legislature to appoint the electors that you feel are appropriate for your state.
Thank you, and we are about to wrap it up here. Great commentary, Blake. About to wrap it up here, we need to clear out this room, but we do want to remind you guys that Brightside Broadcasting Network is almost entirely viewer-funded, meaning we rely on your donations to go from rally to rally, hearing to hearing, and to cover the White House and the march for Trump, which is currently going on today. So it's a bus tour covering 23 cities in two weeks, and we cover all of that, there's a lot going on right now, we're providing as much content as possible. So if you've enjoyed seeing a little bit of different avenues here at RSBN, then keep those donations coming, and we'll keep providing you some of the greatest coverage that we possibly can. There's a number of ways you can support us. The first one is by clicking that dollar sign in the bottom right-hand corner of the YouTube Super Chat, and the second way is via our website. Whether you donate or not, check out our website, that's www.rsbnetwork.com/donate. The third way is by sending a check, and we love to read these letters that come with the checks. And that is, send those to rsbn@1550opaleca road, suite 6, box 3, 44, Auburn, Alabama, 36830. Moderators, thank you for being here today, drop those addresses down below. We are going to hop out of here for exactly 30 minutes, and we will be right back, so don't go anywhere, this is the stream you want to stay on.
We'll see you after the lunch break.
I'm Mike Lindell, the inventor and CEO of MyPillow, and I've got some great news for you. Today, you can save up to 66% off all my products, from my MyPillows, to my Giza Dream Sheets, my towels, my roll-and-go travel pillows, my mattress topper. I have over 100 products that you're going to save up to 66% using the promo code RSBN, Brightside Broadcast Network, RSBN. Use that promo code at mypillow.com, or call 800-836-7566. That's 800-836-7566. Remember to use the code RSBN, and here's the great news, half the money is going to support Brightside Broadcasting Network.